I'm going to call this meeting to order. Would you all please rise for the flag salute.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Director Miller.
Here.
Director Winskill.
Here.
Director Ashka.
Here.
Director Viall.
Here.
Director Heinz.
Here.
So a motion to adopt the agenda.
I move adoption.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero. Item number six, recognition of staff, students, and community, six one, recognition of Gold Star Community Partner Award for September 2015.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to be here. My name is Amanda Scott-Thomas. I'm the director of the Community Partnership Office and we are going to be recommending some community partners to be awarded the Gold Star Community Partner Award. First, we're going to start off with August. And this summer, community partners, including Tacoma Public Schools, the Tacoma Public Library, and Graduate Tacoma, as well as the Tacoma College Support Network, came together to pilot a Summer College Depot Program. College Depot took place at the downtown Tacoma Public Library and included six weekly workshops hosted by community partners and supported by volunteers. The first hour of each two-hour session focused on college and career navigation, including college and career search, building a competitive application, the personal statement, financial aid, scholarships, and staying organized in the application process. The second hour was dedicated to breakout sessions, providing individualized mentoring and access to library resources. Now Tacoma Public School students can use their IDs to access library resources. The successful pilot represents the collaboration of over twenty community partners and served an average of forty-five students and parents each session, many returning for multiple sessions. This is the first Gold Star Community Partner Award recommendation for an individual. Wendy Holcomb is the Plan for College Outreach Coordinator for Tacoma College Support Network and Graduate Tacoma. She serves on the Board of Directors of Associated Ministries, and she's also a longtime community volunteer and student advocate. Wendy was also the Summer College Depot's MVP. Wendy was the primary coordinator for the pilot and worked tirelessly in planning the depot, coordinating the marketing and promotion, coalescing higher education partners and volunteers. Wendy worked each session, and her college prep expertise, her broad network, and skills were essential to the success of the collaborative pilot in support of students. So it's our recommendation, the Community Partnership recommends, that the Board of Directors recognize Wendy Holcomb as being awarded the Gold Star Community Partner Award. Wendy?
Well, thank you. I'm very honored by this award, and I also want to thank the board for all that you're doing and the district for cradle to college access for our students. I know you have really taken some leadership in things like academic acceleration and access to free SAT and PSAT testing. And all these kinds of things really are making a difference for our students in being able to achieve their goals and move beyond and really have successful futures. So, thank you. I'm happy to partner with all of you, and I'm looking forward to continuing that work.
Thank you. Ms. Holcomb, would you please come up so we can congratulate you?
Thank you. And for our September recognition, and the reason that we're doing this, I skipped this the first part, is that Tacoma Public Schools defines partnership as a cooperative relationship between students, families, and schools, district, and the greater community. Partners are committed to supporting student academic success and the whole child. Partners work with and invest in the education of our children and youth whose future in turn will affect the quality of life in our entire Tacoma community. When it comes to student success, TPS recognizes that schools cannot do it alone. And in recognition of an investment of time, talent, and resources for TPS students, families, and staff, the Gold Star Community Partner Award signifies honor and thanks to community partners who has made a difference by doing what is best for kids. This next consideration is for over twenty years, B-C-R-A Design has been one of the Northwest premier design firms, providing architecture and interior design, science and engineering, planning and resource management, and visual communication and strategy. Known for their exceptional and diverse and sustainable designs such as the Tacoma Art Museum, their Early Learning Center, Tacoma Goodwill Headquarters, and Mill Guard Work Opportunity Center, and our very own beautiful Blix Elementary School, B-C-A is a community-minded member of the Tacoma business community. It was the first TPS family and community learning academy where we engaged B-C-R-A. They came and participated, and they were so struck by the work that was going on at MacArthur that they wanted to get involved, and they expressed an interest to volunteer at the school. Patrick Johnson, the Director of Diversity and Excellence, immediately connected B-C-R-A and established a mentoring program in partnership with Big Brothers Big Sisters of Puget Sound. Several B-C-R-A staff members began mentoring MacArthur students for one hour a week, supporting student success and the whole child. B-C-R-A is doing their part in hitting the true mark of partnership. Like LaMarion, I don't know if you saw the video that is done about the Big Brothers Big Sister program, they hit a bull's eye target. And so we're here to thank them tonight. I'm going to have B-C-R-A Representatives Stuart and Rory come up and accept this award.
We didn't design the Tacoma. Full disclosure. Thank you, Amanda, for coming out and showing us that this is something we could actually do. We had no idea, and it's wonderful. We love it, and we're going to keep going for years doing this. It's a wonderful program, and it's a great way to meet the kids and to actually get to know the kids, and they're wonderful children, and thank you for this opportunity.
I just also want to thank you for the opportunity. Not only am I a big sister, but I also had the opportunity to mentor a Sammy student, Chanel, who she's moved on to other places but has still come back and visited me, and I think she will probably visit me throughout her career and going on to her profession, which has really been inspirational to myself and other B-C-R-A employees to be energized by someone who is so talented and so young and early in their career. So I felt that the students have given back to us as much as we've given to them. And just want to thank you for the job that you're doing, and then also that we can help support this mission for our community. Thank you.
Would you please come up so we can thank you? Item six point three.
Thank you, President Heinz and members of the board. You may be familiar with the anecdote that describes if you put a frog in a pot of cold water and you heat it up slowly, the frog won't perceive the danger and won't jump out of the pot before it cooks to death. Well, that frog only knows what it knows. It likes water, it's in water, and that's it. Sometimes we're a little bit like that frog. We see video stories produced about our students, our teachers, our schools, and our programs, and we like the stories, we like the videos, and that's it. It's not until video storytelling experts from outside Tacoma Public Schools look at our videos and proclaim them the best in the country, that's when we realize just how good those videos really are. So this year, for the first time, Tacoma Public Schools entered video stories in the National Association of Telecommunications Officers and Advisors Competition. This competition is often referred to as the Emmys of Government Education and Public Access Television. Casey Madison is our Video Production Coordinator for Storytelling, and he produced all three of the entries that were submitted this year. In the Special Audience category, the video Wilson High School Project Unify told the story of lives changed forever when students with disabilities and general education students participate together in athletics, and it won first place. In the Documentary category, the video Refusing to Be a Dropout Statistic told the story of four Oakland High School students who had to overcome some grueling obstacles outside of school to graduate, and it won first place. And the third Public Information Series, True Grit: Profiles of Perseverance, told three separate stories of students, one who came to us from Mexico and didn't speak English, one who suffered from depression, and another who was diagnosed with a brain tumor. That video won first place. So if you didn't know how powerful and compelling Tacoma Public Schools' video storytelling is before this, I hope that you do now. And it's my pleasure to introduce the producer of those videos and salute him and his award-winning work, Casey Madison.
I really don't have much to say. I'm more comfortable asking questions. So Josh, I've got a couple of things for you. I just want to say thanks to Dan and the team for all the support that they give us and the work that we do, and for all of you up in those chairs for the support that you give our department. Because I spent twenty years as a journalist, and I left that business because it, I didn't leave it because I didn't like it anymore. I left it because the business kind of left me, really is what happened. But to work with an organization that understands the power of storytelling and the need for us to be in the public and continue to tell the community about the good work we do is just phenomenal. I'm asked to speak and talk to national organizations and other school districts, and the first thing I need to say is you need a leadership group in place that supports your work. Because without that, and without understanding the value of storytelling, it's going to be really hard to do this kind of work. So I really want to say thank you and thanks, Dan.
Casey, would you come up so we can congratulate you?
Vice President Viall.
Thank you. I had the pleasure to work with Mr. Vopel a number of years ago at the city, and I don't think it's any coincidence that while he was at the city in the same job, that the city of Tacoma, its Channel Twelve, won the same kind of awards many years in a row that we're now winning here at Tacoma Public Schools. So Casey, I know you make the videos and you're awesome, but I know you've got a great boss who encourages you to do that. So Dan, I just want to acknowledge your role in this too, because I know you have done this behind the scenes before, so thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Viall. Appreciate that. Next up, you know, last week was National School Lunch Week, when school systems across the country honored the work of their cooks and managers, assistant cooks, cashiers, and other lunchroom helpers. And our more than two hundred Nutrition Services employees serve more than sixteen thousand meals each day. And I know you're aware that in education, we do a lot of training. And you can imagine in Nutrition Services, there's a lot of food handling training, but there's also CPR training and Heimlich maneuver training. And when was the last time you really had to use the Heimlich maneuver on somebody, right? Well, Lincoln High School student Alexis Bardo recently started choking on a potato tot while eating lunch. After unsuccessfully trying to get help from her friends, she ran to the cashier, the cashier line where Erica Lopez works. The rest of the story is one worth acknowledging and honoring as heroic, and I will let Alexis and Erica tell you the rest of the story. Please welcome Alexis and Erica.
Hi, everybody. Well, yeah, this happened on October second. It was during first lunch, and I was working at my register. I have kids coming in, right side and the left side. And, well, I just feel somebody was touching on my shoulder like really hard. So I was thinking, some of the kids, they would like to, you know, just playing with me or something, but when I turned my face and looked at Alexis's face, it was so scary. Her face, it was blue, purple, I don't even know how to describe that color in her face. And she was just pointing at her throat, and I just, you know, thinking I need to help her. I just get in her bag and try to do, you know, whatever is, you know, pushing her stomach. And she was no color. It was, you know, her body feel like kind of heavy. So all her hair, it was down, so I just pull her hair back, and it's still the same color. I do it twice, and I start getting in her bag until finally a little piece of potato tot come out. So she hugged me and said, "Thank you very much." I thought I would kind of die. And just feeling on her hands and her arms, so cold, different kind of cold than I ever feel before. So I'm really happy to see her, she is here, and she's doing well. I never thought, what can I use the CPR that I've been learned, never in my mind. But thanks God that I'll be, you know, I'll be able to help her. Thank you.
Would you both please come up? Oh, she's going to talk. Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, I didn't know I was going to choke. It was out of nowhere, I guess. I was just talking to one of my friends, and last thing you know, I started choking and I couldn't breathe. And then I looked around and like no one could help me, so I just ran to her and like patted on her shoulder like she said, and she helped me. And then I thanked her because I really thought I was going to die. So I'm so grateful.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming up and sharing.
Right, item number seven, members of the public wishing to address the board. Do we have anyone this evening?
Yes, we do. We have a proud Wilson Ram alumni from nineteen seventy-six, Mr. Al Switzer. Mr. Switzer, can you come up, please?
And as he's coming up, I will remind the audience, school board members, encourage public participation. Your input is appreciated. If you would like to address the school board, follow these steps. Complete a Citizens Request to Speak card, which is located at the back of the auditorium. Submit the card to the School Board Secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards submitted after the public comment period has ended will not be considered at this session. The Deputy Superintendent will call your name. When it is your turn to address the school board, please speak into the microphone. You will have up to three minutes to share your comments. At the one-minute mark, you'll hear a ding, and at the zero-minute mark, you'll hear a second ding. Please begin.
Good evening. I'm with the Sixth Avenue Business District. I'm a board member with them. And I've just gotten on to the board this year in January. And when I rejoined the group, I told them I'd like to bring Santa Claus to Sixth Avenue in Tacoma. I sit out at the old Cannery Furniture Store where I walk in the lines that are three and a half hours long before I get to the store. So I get to have a lot of effect, as you do, with the kids. And so my goal is to, I've been nine years planning this, and they're going to help me do it. I want to get the marching bands, the drill teams, the ROTCs, all the music groups from all the schools, and take, put them in a parade. And we're looking at bringing a whole bunch of other things in with it. We are a nonprofit. We have a committee that's helping us put this all together, and things are moving along really quick right now. And the main reason I came here was I've gone through the process to talk to the kids at the school, or the principals, and gotten around to most of them so far. I intend to go with the kids from Grant Elementary and Jason Lee Middle School, because they do a lot of painting of the business windows down the avenue. And this year, Santa's going to go with them, so we can try and get them all. So we're going to have some trophies for the high schools, middle schools, and grade schools. If we have those there that are going to pass from year to year, this is going to be an ongoing process. Gray Lumber has volunteered to help me build a pretty nice sled for the parade, and we are going to kind of take this to another level. I love Russell Wilson's quote, "Why not us?" We don't have it around here during the holidays. I get to go five years to Mary Bridget, society, to see the things you get to do. This is pretty cool. So that's why I'm coming here. And the last thing I have is just to, I'd like to invite you to be part of our parade. We will find some pretty cool rides, and I'm hoping to be up this next week up to Seattle and talking to the commander up at the base with the Coast Guard and trying to get some of them down here with us. And then I'm going to go out to Fort Lewis and McCord and try and take this to a level of, it'll be cool this year. We'll shoot for the moon, get close we can, and next year we'll get bigger. So that's why I'm here, and as a member of the group, to ask you to come and be part of our fun. The date is going to be December sixth. It's going to start at six o'clock. We are going to run from Alder and Sixth Avenue up Sixth Avenue to Jason Lee. The staging area is going to start at Sixth Avenue and run down Lawrence towards North Eleventh. And if we need more room, then we'll try to get the Eleventh Street in front of the fieldhouse there at UPS. I'm planning to go over to UPS and talk to the dean over there, who I understand is a Dickens scholar. We're going to run with the Dickens theme, so who better to go talk to? And so the kids can get let off there at Lawrence and be staged, and then the buses will go to Jason Lee where they can be repicked up, and so they won't have any other thing to do but in the parade and ride on out. And so we're just encouraging all the groups and stuff. The last thing is, after we get done, I want to get all the music teachers to help me. And I'd like to, next year, put on a Santa's All-Star Extravaganza with the kids down at the Dome and put a musical on and pull the All-Stars out of all the schools, and all the funds get to go back to them. So that's just kind of some of the things we've got happening there on the app. You have a packet. It has some newsletters, all the contact information's there for our president and everybody else. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to ask.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any other public comments this evening?
No, we do not.
All right. Item number eight, Superintendent's Report.
There is no Superintendent Report this evening.
Item number nine.
Actually, I'd like to jump in there real quick and make one public comment. I, you know, I was just struck when you think about how fortunate we are, and I know that the public recognition oftentimes gets, happens, and people quickly get out there. But for those that are watching at home and for those that were here, we're just so proud to be a part of a community. You know, you have community volunteers that are coming in to make the difference. You literally have people saving lives. And we're so fortunate to have talent and staff in several areas. We have the pleasure of looking and working around benchmarks, which are all measured in student outcomes. And whenever I get a chance to speak with other folks from other districts, and they say, "Yeah, but that's not really the case," I always direct them to the website, the work that Casey, Kevin, Dan, and the whole team do to put sound visuals to words on paper. It reminds us of the why, and whenever I get down, it just takes moments like that we had tonight to spur me back up. Needless to say, I mean, who else has Santa Claus come to their board meetings? So it is a little bit of a magical place, and I know we have, in October. And didn't tell anybody that I was on the naughty list, which is even a moral bonus, so there's hope for me. They do. I know we have more work to do. I know that you know that we have more work to do, and Superintendent Santorino is relentless in that, but just wanted us all to pause and also be thankful for the community that we live in.
Thank you for sharing. All right, with that, we'll move on to item number nine, the Consent Agenda.
I move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero. Item number ten, Policy Matters. I believe we have any.
There are none this evening.
Item number eleven, Quarterly Financial Update. I believe there's a presentation this evening. Item number twelve, Curriculum and Instruction. I believe we have anything under that this evening. Item number thirteen, Business Matters, thirteen point one, Approval of Agreement Between Tacoma School District Number Ten and the Puget Sound Education Service District for the Early Childhood Education Assistance Program for the 2015-2016 school year.
The Deputy Superintendent, on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, recommends that the Board of Directors approve the agreement between the Tacoma School District Number Ten and the Puget Sound Educational Service District for Early Childhood Education and Assistance Program for the period of July first, 2015, to June thirtieth, 2016, and approve expenditures of funds according to appropriate funding guidelines.
I move approval.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero. Item thirteen point two, Approval of Metro Parks Interlocal Agreement for the Sparks Program.
The Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support recommends that the Board of Directors approve Addendum Number One to the Interlocal Agreement with Metro Parks Tacoma for the Sparks Program.
Move approval. Second.
Any questions or comments? I have a question. There are four middle schools. Which four middle schools?
Another one that's being added is Geodrome. I think it's, do you know?
Not off the top of my head, so we'll get those four too.
Yeah.
Okay. Friday report.
Yep, and it's in direct response to working with the parks around your benchmark around extracurricular activities and engagement. You were very clear in the past that not all extracurricular activities had to be just housed in schools with sports. And so we're working in alignment with that. And then previously, the ECAP, Early Learning, is in direct alignment to your preschool enrollment benchmark. So I just want to point those pieces out.
Stuart, Truman, Meker, and Geodrome. Stuart, Truman, Meker, and Geodrome. Those are identified in the addendum as well, so they're identified in the contract.
Director Ashka.
So are those the only middle schools with Spark programs right now?
Those are the ones that this, that Attachment B relates to, and those are the ones where the Sparks Program is right now.
So one of the conversations we're having with our community partners is around the idea of alignment and not competing in certain areas. And so, for example, Gray Middle School is not working with Sparks because they're working with the Boys and Girls Club right there. And so in guidance and in alignment with the Foundation for Tacoma Students efforts to align our resources to make sure that the city's covered. Metro Parks has been a little bit flexible with the Sparks Program to fill in holes in areas of need in parts of town that do not have services.
So I think that the Sparks Program is great, and our partnership with Metro Parks is phenomenal. I guess you pretty much answered my question, so can I assume then that there are other programs, other middle schools?
Yes, and in addition to that, we are working with providers to ensure that we do have programs. And that we're using that data. We were able to start to collect baseline data, but now we're going back and starting to ask students that have traditionally not been engaged, what are the programs that you would like? Another one that's oftentimes not on the radar is the Broadway Center, and working with them to offering middle school programming as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
As well as peace, and we can go down the list, but we'll bring those back.
All right, thank you.
Just one comment.
Director Viall.
I appreciate the fact that we're not having competition for program within schools, and I think that allows for better coverage of all of our schools rather than just having two or three organizations all lined up in one school. And I really appreciate that on the part of our community partners, willing to divide up the pie, so to speak, of where they can serve, best serve our kids. And I want to thank them for that, that we're not in competition, we're in cooperation, and I appreciate the fact they understand that.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries four zero. We'll move on to item thirteen point three, Approval of the Contract Between Tacoma School District Number Ten and Safe Streets, a nonprofit charitable organization.
On behalf of the Chief Financial Officer, the Deputy Superintendent recommends that the Board of Directors approve the contract between Tacoma School District Number Ten and Safe Streets Campaign And Safe Streets Campaign For the Period of July 1st, 2014 Through Ju- September 30th, 2014. And I would, uh, assume that those are not accurate dates.
Oh, they are accurate dates.
Oh, I apologize. So would you provide a little more context for us, General Counsel?
Uh, yes, so it's my understanding from Chief Financial Officer Medina That there was a change in the contract cycle with Safe Streets and unintentionally a period of time was not covered by a prior contract. And so this is to adjust that to ensure that Safe Streets is compensated for the services that was provided during that window. And at an upcoming meeting, the board will be looking at the Safe Streets contract for the 2015-2016 school year. And now they're on the same fiscal cycle as the district, so we shouldn't have issues like this occur.
I believe the question and date is, is the year's 2014?
Correct.
That was the gap.
That was when the gap occurred.
Okay, so we're, this is a correct, I'm sorry.
Any questions or comments?
So this is to, uh, go back and correct, I'm mistaken, to get this aligned correctly for last year?
Actually, we need to move back, cause I don't believe that the item has been moved to an extent.
I will move adoption.
Second.
And then I see that Director Wenskill's left the room, but we are required to identify that she is recusing herself from this vote Because she also serves on the Safe Streets Board. And it is considered to be a remote interest under RCW 4223040. And so, in compliance with the Code for Ethics for Municipal Officers, Director Wenskill will recuse herself from the vote. So, yes, the, this was, the services occurred in 2014. The gap was identified at the end of the 2014-2015 school year by Safe Streets Who didn't notice the change in dates was going to have a, an implication on them. And there was just some miscommunication as the contract was done as to the contract cycle. And so this is providing them a contract related to services that they did render during that period. However, it was not covered by the prior contract. And it's my understanding that that has been remedied moving forward.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four zero. Director Wenskill, you may come back in. We'll move on to item thirteen point four, Approval of Purchase Order For Upgrading E-School Plus Student Information System Hardware Components.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Executive Director of Technology Services recommends that the Board of Directors approve the purchase order with Hewitt Packard For the amount of two thou- $219,000. Funding source, Technology Capital Project Funds.
Approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero. Item fourteen, Other Business, fourteen point one, Adoption of Resolution Number 2002 Expressing Support For The Passage Of City Of Tacoma Proposition Number Three Set For Special Election On November 3rd, 2015.
On behalf of the Superintendent, the Deputy Superintendent recommends that the Board adopt the attached resolution number 2002 Expressing Support For The Passage Of C- City Of Tacoma Proposition Number Three.
And Proposition A. It is separate, okay, I'm sorry. Move approval?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
May I comment?
Vice President of y'all.
Thank you, uh, I will comment on this because, uh, for disclosure, I'm on the pro for the ballot in, from my previous job. Uh, streets, sidewalks and, um, in our city, I don't think we all drive around this town, we know how bad they are. It's time to get them fixed. And these are safety issues for our kids. And, and included in these, uh, both of these will be crosswalks, flashing beacons and so on. And we've seen all, um, Director Heinz and I met with the mayor and her staff on Monday. And we discussed about getting together and putting together a joint, uh, campaign for traffic safety, Both on the part of drivers and on the part of pedestrians. And this is a piece that would implement what I'm sure that we're gonna come up with. Better markings, better, uh, opportunities for kids to walk to school, or having people walk again, surprise, surprise. And I think, uh, if we have a quality city, we need quality infrastructure. And I, and, um, I would, uh, ask the Board to support this. The Park District also has, uh, passed a resolution of support. It will only cost the average homeowner in Tacoma seven and a half dollars a month. That's, you know, probably most people spend more on that at Starbucks. But, um, I'm laughing, I know some of we, some of us do and some of us don't. But seriously, it's been, uh, back in the late nineties, the city, uh, used some of the monies that had been set aside for streets for a long time To do some other improvements. The last time the citizens actually voted to improve streets was 1967. There, contrary to what you may hear, there are not additional general fund dollars that can be used for this. And if we wanna have a quality city, we need to move ahead with this. And it does directly impact us as a school district because of safety and partnerships. Thank you.
Thank you, any other questions or comments? It's an opportunity to put the pothole pig out of business.
Yeah.
And actually, if I may make a comment. I've had the privilege of seeing a few presentations on this, and we've had a few different roads package come, come up in the last five, eight years in Tacoma. And I haven't always loved them. The one I love about this one, it's very specific about making sure that there are improvements all across the city on an equitable basis. And that there's a long-term plan, um, to continue that funding hopefully once the sun sets. So there's a sunset clause, it's not a permanent tax. And so, I, I, I really appreciate that they put this package together for us.
If I might just follow up on your comment. Um, it will sunset in ten years and each year, the city will issue a report back to the citizens indicating what they have accomplished. So there's a big accountability piece in this resolution.
Alright, all those in favor of adopting the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero. Item fourteen point two, Adoption of Resolution Number 2003 Expressing Support For The Passage Of City Of Tacoma Proposition A Transportation Sales and Use Tax Set For Special Election On November 3rd, 2015.
Move approval?
Second.
Do I need, do I need to have it read before I?
No, you've, you've done it by the introduction of it.
Okay, perfect.
I, I can explain it if you would like me to.
I just saw the Deputy Superintendent ready to read it in, I think we're okay.
I'm greatly appreciation that you've covered my bases.
It's been moved and seconded, any questions or comments?
If I might, uh-
Vice President of y'all.
Comment on what this is. Uh, the, uh, state requires us to create a transportation benefit district To collect the one-tenth of the sales tax that's proposed in this. And this is what, uh, our resolution is supporting that. So on your ballots, you will see Proposition Three and Proposition A. This creates a, uh, transportation benefit district, uh, as required by state law. So that's why there's two of them.
Director Ashka.
Just a quick question, you know, there's lots of interesting things on the ballot this year in terms of the way that you need to vote. Are these yes, yes votes for approval? Okay, just wanted to make sure that we-
They're not backwards like a couple of them are.
Perfect, thank you.
Great.
Sure, any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries-
I'm abstaining on, on this issue, uh, because of the increase in the sales tax and, um, just, it's creeping up and, uh, I just, I don't approve of it at this time.
Okay.
I don't think it's for our body to approve of it actually, and for people to make up their own minds, so.
So that's, uh, four yeses and an abstention from Director Wenskill. Onto item number fifteen, Report To The Board, fifteen point one, IDEA Quarterly Report.
Yes, and so, uh, as you're aware, you adopted us moving forward, us meaning the district, to move forward with, uh, a couple of different proposals, innovative proposals. Um, we've given you, uh, some minor updates, but part of our implementation plan is, is to give, uh, quarterly updates. And so this is the first of the quarterly updates. Uh, we have, uh, Director of Project Management Cass Ting with us, Assistant Superintendent Ms. Toni Pace. We're gonna walk you through, uh, where we are with IDEA, uh, the proposal, uh, some of the steps that have been in place and some of the work that needs to move forward. Where we are with the, the, um, HNT Academy Proposal. And then we also wanna give you a quick update of where we are with the IB programming at, uh, the Whittier-Wainwright model. And so, these are designed to be that. And then I'll remind those folks at home, um, that we will be having a work study after this meeting to discuss the innovation process as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Assistant Superintendent Pace?
Thank you, so it's very exciting for us tonight to bring you this, uh, quarterly update as you asked us to do, um, back in the spring When, actually the summer, when we, when you approved this proposal from IDEA. And, uh, so we are moving forward now in the planning stages, uh, which is this year, 2015-16, uh, the 2015-16 fiscal year. Uh, we are now, uh, entering into the negotiation phase of the requirements to finalize our areas of staffing, budget, curriculum, Facility improvements and technology requirements. And, uh, with the help of Cass, uh, under project management skills, we are working through, uh, detailed requirements matrix Which we go through the application form and we look at, uh, the, uh, proposal, proposed items, uh, from the original application And begin that negotiation process of looking at the viability of those proposals. So, that's kind of where we are right now in, in, in the, uh, process is, is looking at that, uh, as a negotiation phase And developing that, uh, that matrix. Uh, our approach right now is extremely conservative, um, we're allowing for expansion should our budget allow that. Uh, but we are moving forward, uh, very conservative, conservatively to ensure that we have, um, uh, planned correctly And that we are ready to open in the fall of 2016, which is, uh, your directive for us, um, at this point. We also, um, uh, are in the process of, uh, ongoing, uh, an ongoing effort to, uh, inform the community of IDEA. So we have, uh, information up on the website. Uh, we also have, as we, uh, told you earlier this, this, uh, year, Uh, that we are also going forward with the eighth graders and in letting them know about IDEA And what it, you know, what they're interested in IDEA, uh, as, uh, uh, an option for them, uh, for the, uh, fall of 2016. We've also at this point hired, uh, One Para Educator to help with some of the logistics of getting this off the ground. There's lots of work in that process. And, uh, we haven't actually hired the person yet, but we're in the process of, of, uh, getting that person on board.
So real quickly, uh, Assistant Superintendent Pace had mentioned that the term negotiate. So one of the, the pieces in your RFP was is that, uh, the proposals would be accepted and considered. But all the way through this process, um, it was very important that we heard from you is, is that we would go step by step through each part of the proposal And find out what was, uh, that we could, uh, demonstrate fiduciary responsibility in. Um, what we could do to continue to be innovative that was in guidelines of, uh, state law. As well as identify specifically each policy that may need waivers that we would then bring back to you. And so that negotiation processes, now the devil's in the details if you will. And the team is sitting down with the, the school designers and really going step by step, Which then we would, in essence, be creating many agreements to say that this is, uh, manageable, Meaning a sustainable opportunity that we can, uh, take a calculated risk in some areas. Or we need to bring back for, for their clarification. And so, in future monitoring reports, we would be bringing back to you elements and saying, okay, so here's what curriculum really means. Um, here's the non-negotiables if you will. And here's where the team is designed to try to be innovative and where they demonstrate flexibility in the past. Okay?
Yeah, we're meeting on a weekly basis and really taking this, uh, work very seriously. And, uh, meeting, I know John and Kristen Tender are, uh, spending a lot of hours with us. And, uh, we're getting through this, this proposal. So this next slide shows you, uh, um, a graph, or I guess you could say a, um, a graph of kind of where we are right now Compared to the original proposal, just a few of the items that are in the original proposal and the reason why it might look a little different. Uh, currently, we're, uh, forecasting 125 students per grade level. So we would, we would wanna open up, uh, in this coming fall, uh, with 125 ninth graders. Uh, the original proposal was 155, where we're looking for a projected capacity of no more than 500 students. So that's why we're looking at 125 per grade level. Um, the facility that was identified originally was Park Avenue, uh, for new, the neutral cost, uh, that we assumed would, would occur. Uh, we are still going forward with Park Avenue. Um, there are some, uh, additional costs that we, uh, found when we got into Park Avenue. Park Avenue is the best option available. Uh, there have been others considered as well. Uh, but Park Avenue has never really been used fully, uh, for quite a while. There have been programs in Park Avenue. So that's part of the reason why there's been areas of the building that, uh, we need to have some attention to. And that's the part that we're going through at this point. Um, we've estimated the range of costs for this year, this is the planning year, Uh, for $750,000 for the facility and operations in year one. And this is year one. Uh, we're still solidifying those costs as we go through. And, and part of our conversations that we're having in the various areas, the staffing and, and, uh, curriculum and so forth Are a way to find out, you know, how much do we really need for that first year, for that hundred, those 125 students. And then we're gonna be also putting together, uh, down the road, a three to five-year plan as well, um, that will have additional costs. The school start is set for 2016-17. And, uh, the policy provides for planning for this first year. So, um, that's kind of where we are today with, with IDEA. Um, it's an exciting process and, uh, I think we're all, uh, just, uh, really excited about the work that, that we're involved with at this point. So we're gonna go ahead, I'm gonna turn this over to Cass. She's been a, a great, uh, partner in this, in this process. And, uh, she's been the project manager for IDEA as well as the, um, HNT, um, or the Jason Lee Academy and, uh, Wainwright. So, she's gonna take us through this next two slides that we have.
Thank you, did you want to ask any questions on this or just go straight forward?
We'll go through this one first and ask for questions again.
We're gonna ask for questions on the IDEA?
You wanna do that now?
I don't know.
Sure.
Okay.
Let's, let's stay with it, any questions on IDEA?
Yeah, I got a comment.
Director Miller?
I'm just really concerned about the cost. Uh, new, uh, opening up a building, having, uh, the cost for the building itself every year. And, um, you know, I've been on this board for too long and seen too many budget deficits. And I'm really concerned about what this will cost that, for brick and mortar that cannot be used for students. Um, I would love to see Foss looked at again. Um, you know, it seems like it worked for Lincoln Academy and Lincoln High School. So, um, I am just, I only got a little more than a month left on this board, but I just wanted to lodge my concern About the cost that, uh, uh, this is gonna bring onto the district. So, that's my comment.
Any other questions or comments, Director Ashka?
So, it, along the same lines but slightly different, what do you get for 750 grand of, uh, renovations at Park Ave?
Uh, and, and that's not just the renovations, 750,000 also includes, uh, curriculum costs, uh, some of the, uh, um, Uh, initial staffing, for instance, the Para Educator, um-
Technology and infrastructure.
She has a list of things over there, pardon me? Yeah, initial curriculum, um, and some of the, the renovations as well. So it's not just, it's, it's opening up for 125 students-
Sure.
Uh, in the fall.
So here's the, the question in the back of my mind, right? We're, we're innovating for achievement, we're building for achievement, and then our innovative schools are in trailers and in schools that haven't been used for a long time. Um, and so I wanna make sure that if we're gonna do it, that we're also actually giving them a facility that works. And if we can't do that, is there another facility that would, would work? And I, I don't know, I don't know, uh, I know we have different plans with like McKinley, but McKinley is being used right now, so it's occupiable, for instance. Um, I don't know if the options like that have been looked at, but I just, uh, I don't wanna see it. If we're going to do it, we need to do it well, although I very much agree with, uh, Director Miller That we also need to be able to sustain that in a way that's equitable across the district. And I don't wanna ever have to close another school, bad, bad experience.
And I think, uh, go back to the other slide, uh, the last slide. So, um, we have, as, as others considered on the second line there, McKinley Warehouse and Foss. So we have looked at other, uh, venues. Um, we've taken into consideration the current program at Foss. Uh, you know, what, is it viable, um, to, to be housed at the McKinley site and those kinds of things, so.
So the McKinley site you're referring to, I believe, is the old Globe Warehouse after 64th, correct?
But we also have talked about the old McKinley School site as well.
Okay, I guess I would be interested, if you can, maybe on the Friday Report, to see, um, a listing of the different locations that you did look at.
Sure.
And kind of someplace you probably have a pro and con list.
We can certainly do that.
That'd be great, thank you.
Vice President of y'all?
Uh, I appreciate, uh, in-depth, uh, looking at what you're doing and trying to reduce costs. And, um, you know, we've gone into this and I understand Director Miller's comments too. But, yeah, if we're really gonna do this, we, we either have to do it or not do it, one or the other.
Agreed.
And I think we are committed to doing it. And I've always found that if you are really committed, there's usually a way to get it done and to get it done correctly. And I think we're going in the right direction, particularly with the IDEA school Because all we're hearing now is the shortage of engineers and the shortage- all we're hearing now is the shortage of engineers and the shortage of science, and I think there may be some dollars coming at some point from some other sources, federal and state, even though the state's still playing around with MacLeary, they have put money in for STEM and things like that. There's always a possibility, once we get this building up and going, that we will go out after we complete the construction of our 14 schools, we're looking, we'll look at going out and doing more schools as possible, that the community would like a new school for that at some point. So you're looking maybe four years at that building and possibility of some other opportunities. I think that just given where we are in this country, talking about science education, it reminds me of where we were when I was in high school, when the National Defense Education Act was passed and we produced tons of engineers and teachers and so on during that time, that we are in the right place at the right time in terms of starting this school. I appreciate all the work I know that's gone into reducing the costs and, you know, we know that we can start this on a Chevy budget and still do, I think, what we need to do. And I think we, once we get up and started, we'll be, we will sustain it. So that's, you know, just my comments. And if I feel that we can't, I may change my mind, but I really think that we're doing this in the right way. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Onto the Jason Lee Academy.
Jason Lee Academy, it was HNT prior, but now it's named Jason Lee Academy. It has changed from the previous model of a brand-new school of 300 students to a school within a school. It was a recommendation from the board and leadership. So they're anticipating 90 students, the first cohort, per grade level and increasing every year by that same cohort. They're looking at a pilot approach, and there are some very innovative things that they want to do that will require waivers of some sort. Gardens, where you eat the food that you reap from your own garden. Skateboarding, you know, partners, incorporation of different kind of partners. So there will be some waivers, and that's why they're anticipating opening in the 2017 school year. The staffing originally, transportation, et cetera, all the costs were like 1.3 million, but we really are taking a look at the budget again since it's now school within a school. And that we'll be getting together with Christine Brandt and Jen Cabista and looking at that again. So we're establishing an every-other-week meeting to try to build out the requirements, just like we did for the IDEA school. So they are looking forward to starting, but there's going to be some very innovative things that they'll be presenting. And I think that they push the envelope, but I think that when you push the envelope, you can get a lot of great rewards along with the community support. I'm going to go on to Wayne Wright Whittier unless we have any questions with that.
We'll pause. Any questions or comments? Director Ashka?
I've asked a lot of questions about IDEA and how we're going to recruit students and that sort of thing, and when we talked about the Jason Lee Academy being at Jason Lee, in my head I had it that we're going to use, or basically it'll be a subpopulation of existing Jason Lee students, or will we be doing outreach and recruitment across the district for that as well?
The priority will be the initial Jason Lee community and then the surrounding area and then open it up.
And of course, it'll remain optional enrollment like any other program in the district. And then I just have a garden comment, so forgive me, I'm going to go a little bit aside, if I may, President Heinz. I get a lot of community comments about gardens because everybody thinks that there was a no-garden rule that came down from the district.
Couldn't eat the food in the garden.
Right, right, unless, but you can, as long as you have a not-for-profit partner that has liability insurance. So I just want to say that out loud, that every school in Tacoma can have and eat out of their gardens as long as they have a partner with liability insurance.
Yes.
There's not a no-garden rule, there's not a no-eating-out-of-your-garden rule. We support it in the district, we just have to make sure that we have legal liability coverage, which of course we would have in the IDEA plan, I'm sure. Yes?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you very much for that aside.
Okay.
Yes.
Clarification.
Okay.
I just had a question, kind of along the lines of Director Ashka, what would the waiver process look like from Nutrition Services? Can you elaborate on what that would entail? What needs to be waived?
They, you know, they would have to, we would sit down with them and present the concerns and the requests of the proposal, and they would, you know, have to grant a waiver based on whether it's legal, whether it's a viable option.
Can you be more specific? I'm not certain what you're talking about.
And I, my specificity is a result of not knowing exactly what their waiver is going to request, so I don't know what specific requests are going to be making along those lines, so it's hard to be, give it a specific example. They haven't, they haven't really talked about specific requests as far as food services go. It's an IDEA format at this point. So when we get those specificities, we'll certainly be bringing those to you, but we'll also be working closely with legal and our food department as well.
Okay. Deputy Superintendent Garcia?
Just for process perspective, we're finding with all of these opportunities is getting very clear about, so what is the, what's the waiver that is needed? And as Assistant Superintendent Pace, is there a law? Is there a board policy? And so we're going through fine-tuning that, and when we start to think about what is the program and when we're working with our partners, what is the specific program? So we're trying not to hypothesize, and then we would bring those waivers to you for your consideration. Sometimes we're finding that there's no waiver needed for what they're wanting to do. And so we're really trying to be disciplined, and our task as staff is not to say yes or no to the waiver, but to get clear about what is the waiver at question and then bring that back to you for your decision-making. Now, we may have a recommendation one way or the other from a legal side or from a staff side, but that's a board policy waiver if that's the case, and you folks would be making those decisions.
Can I make a comment?
Director Wenske?
So about half of our students get free and reduced lunch, and so that would be at Jason Lee, couple, 250 students. So if we had a garden, I don't know that we could feed people for more than one meal, you know, in a garden that we'd be doing. So I don't think it really would have an impact on food services. I'd be kind of surprised.
So I want to-
You'd have to be a lot of food.
To be of help, I have spoken with Dr. Cabista and Ms. Brandt about this, and they're not intending for it to be an issue where they're supplanting Nutrition Services, rather than it would be a program where they supplement and it would be more focused on a healthy nutrition curriculum where they're teaching students about the process for growing your own food that would also help, the intention is to have it be exposing kids to foods they wouldn't necessarily encounter. And so it's not in this instance an issue of needing to waive policies or regulations with Nutrition Services. It's establishing a garden program that's going to be in compliance with federal and state regulations, which for produce is more complicated than you'd ever believe, but also working with a community partner who's experienced, who might be able to come in and help, whether that be working with the WSU Extension and their master gardeners, or another community partner identifying somebody who can meet those very complicated, very technical requirements that we have to meet when we serve food to children and implement them in the garden setting. And it would be a supplementation, not a supplanting of the Nutrition Services program.
Director Ashka?
Thank you. This is also another random comment, and I apologize in advance, but for instance, the school district owns a bunch of property across the street from Roosevelt Elementary that's doing nothing right now besides getting mowed. Imagine if that was crops. It probably could feed a lot of kids salad with the correct legal guidelines in place, and it would be very interesting to be an urban district with a farming and horticulture program. So I just want to put that out there because impossible is not really true. Probably won't be what we do, but it's not impossible.
And I asked the question about the waiver because I'm interested in us, and I've long been interested in us as a district, doing more fork to farm to fork, farm to school, more scratch cooking in our kitchens. I think that it's a win-win. It's healthier options for students that potentially is a better career opportunity for our Nutrition Service workers. And so I would not want us to be just myopically focused on how do we make this happen at Jason Lee, but how do we provide this opportunity for all students in the school district?
I think that, Directors, as you approach the upcoming WASTA meeting, that you might want to have discussion with Directors from other districts about garnering to support to reinstate the state's farm-to-table program, which unfortunately lost its funding. And so that was a program that was really aimed at helping school districts connect with local farmers to do more locally sourced produce and then providing assistance to the farmers to ensure they were meeting those standards. And that would be an area that where, if the program had been successful, I think we'd be able to do some more of the things that you've wanted to do, so.
All right. Thank you. Onto Wayne Wright Whittier.
Yes.
A tongue twister.
WW.
Yeah, WW.
Yes. So this has been in the works for a while under some of the suggestions and guidance of Janet Gates Cortez, who oversees the IB program here at Tacoma Public Schools. It is going to be a pre-K through eight IB eventually. We started out with a proposal of $270,000, the budget still to be determined. We have a charter that's being created and eventually will be signed, and then the budget will be more solidified, at least a rough order of magnitude. The facility is going to be Whittier and New Wayne Wright, and we are embracing the planning and construction schedule, so we're incorporating that into our overall schedule and helping to track, along with curriculum and all the other support services. Student capacity is 450 at each school, however, with the boundary changes, we're sort of flexing as we go, depending on what the outcome is in January with the borders. So we're planning on starting next year with Whittier IB programming, one through K, pre-K, one through three, and then Wayne Wright to start 16-17 for four through eight.
Any questions or comments? Vice President Viall?
Have we, has Whittier been approved as IB school yet? Have they received the international certification like McCarver just did?
No, they'll have to go through a certification process.
Have we applied?
Yes. We, I mean, they, I don't, I don't know how far we are in the application process, but we have, they know that we want to be a PYP school.
Okay, and they know that also for the four-eight school?
Yes, for the NYPD.
Okay.
Yes. And so they can apply, but then they have to meet certain credentials, and so they have to have certain teaching resources on staff.
Right, I'm fairly well aware of that because I represented us when we did the McCarver thing, and one of my kids is a Foss IB grad, so kind of have, you know, I know, and that's why I was asking, because I know that process takes a little, some time to get that actual certification from the international organization, which comes out of Michigan, I believe. That's where the team came from last year, and McCarver got theirs very quickly after the team was here. So hopefully we can, they will do the same for us, for Whittier and Wayne Wright. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Present efficient.
Board comments and reports are next.
We'll move on to board comments. Any reports or comments this evening? We'll start with Director Miller, who has-
Nothing.
-a month left. We'll expect just a sensational report.
Oh, at the very end. Figure about 30, 35 minutes from my comment.
Yes, please bring a manifesto.
I'll be bringing a dancing group and a band.
Perfect. We had Santa here today, so you're going to have to really-
Top that one.
That will be tough.
Director Wenske?
I just want to remind the board that next Friday, the Tacoma School Foundation is having their event at Tacoma, at the Morano Hotel, so I hope it's on your calendar, lunch, and it should be interesting, so you're all invited.
That's great, thank you.
And if you have friends that you think would be good to bring, you know, people that you know in the community, there's still open seats, so feel free to notify the foundation that you're bringing people.
Great, thank you. Director Ashka?
Yeah, a few brief comments, and that is on my calendar. Thank you for asking. When do we get our student representatives? I'm missing their voices.
Yeah, that's what I wondered.
I don't know, but I'll find out. Thank you.
Yeah, because we're well into the school year now.
Mr. Reed and Ms. Cabista are working on getting the student representatives. Part of it is getting them to vote amongst themselves, so hopefully we'll get them by the next meeting.
I know our young lady from-
Joelle French is doing very well-
At the University of Puget Sound.
University of Puget Sound, so she's enjoying her freshman year.
As is Almarani Baptista from Lincoln, who was our Dream Scholar, and a year ago, Sheri Ann Nishiyama, who was the Lincoln valedictorian, is in her second year, and well, on the dean's list, I understand, so awesome. Oh, I was thinking the one that we had as a junior from Wilson or Foss last year.
Mount Tahoma.
Mount Tahoma. She indicated she'd like to come back, so hopefully we'll get her back for a second year.
Director Ashka, did you have additional comments?
I do. I want to talk a little bit more about gardens and our policy on gardens. I run into people all the time that tell me, please change your policy because we're not ever allowed to eat out of our gardens, and I have to explain why that's not true. So I don't know if there's some way that we can put a communication out to our schools that says, yes, you can have a garden, yes, you can eat out of it, and here's the criteria that you have to follow. But what always comes back is that the board or that our attorney has said that that is not allowed and it can never happen. And so, and people are very frustrated. So when I come along and tell them that they're misinformed, they're more frustrated, unfortunately. But I would really like to somehow put this issue to rest for the district because it's not a big, it shouldn't be this big of a problem, in my humble opinion.
I agree. I hear the same thing, so I agree with you.
Mm-hmm. That is clarification, really.
Yeah.
That's what I've told people, it's just, but you said, no, we didn't say no. It's the rules that we have to follow, and you have to, like you said, the nonprofit and all that. I think if we can get some kind of community out, that would be extremely helpful.
That's really simple and really clear.
Is it posted on the website?
I don't know.
I don't believe so. Why don't we put together some talking points, a potential process, and then we'll run it by a board members to see if that meets the needs.
That would be fantastic. I appreciate it.
Perhaps we could get Mr. Bopel to tell a story about community gardens.
Yeah.
An award-winning story.
Once he writes it, it will be, yeah.
Yes. Anything else?
That's it, thank you very much.
Vice President of y'all?
Just one thing. On behalf of Superintendent Santorno, she wants to know if any, how many of us would like to participate in the innovation presentation at WASTA on the 20th. I'm scheduled to go up, and I think, Director Wenske, you're going to be there. So far, we're the only two.
Which day of the week is that? Pardon me?
That's Thursday.
Friday the 20th?
Friday, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
That's my, day after my grandson's birthday, I should remember that.
I'll go.
Okay, great. I can't remember, I think it's in the afternoon. Do you remember, Dr. Garcia?
I believe it is in the afternoon, and we've listed each of you as presenters, so at any time, if you change your mind and like to join the team, you're welcome to do so.
Yeah, I'd love to, yeah.
Great. Good.
Thank you.
That's it?
Okay.
Thank you.
I just note, and it was alluded to earlier, that on Monday, Vice President Viall and I met with Mayor Strickland and Councilman Berg Tombs to discuss school zones and safety in those school zones, and so you can anticipate a joint announcement soon on a education campaign. We'll also be looking at engineering and enforcement as well to make certain that kids and families are safe coming to and from school and also during those off-hours, those non-school hours where they're still taking advantage of the resources that our schools provide. Announcement of future board meetings, we will be here November 12th for a regular business meeting at 6:00. And then the week of November 23rd, that's Thanksgiving week, so we will have a business meeting on Monday, the 23rd, at 6:00 PM. We're getting ready to adjourn. I believe we anticipate 10 or 15 minutes for the room to be reconfigured. Is that correct?
If that's still your desire, then we will take care of that.
And then we'll come back for a study session, no more than 30 minutes, a study session on our innovation policies specifically on the RFP process.
So I'd just like to make a comment, because I brought up the study session after a board or a business meeting, is we used to do this all the time where we have a study session and we all stay at the dais and have that conversation. This is one of the reasons that we did restructure the meetings, because we would always have comments, presentations, and a study session. We're staying here till 9:00, 9:30 at night. So this is a great business meeting, but I'm not sure why we have to reconfigure for a study session and, you know, an interesting conversation.
Sure.
I agree.
And I believe the, we've had this conversation and the consensus was that the study session tends to be more conducive to being held on the floor. It's more, a little less formal, really, I think, when we can look- really, I think when we can look one another in the face instead of down the, down the oval here, so that was the preference, and I think we've talked about this two or three times, just in anticipation of the meeting tonight, so, we've solicited input, we reached consensus, we want to make these available to our viewing audience, so that's why we're not going to go across the hall, we're gonna stay in this venue, and I think ten minutes to get the room reconfigured is a reasonable amount of time, so we'll be adjourned, we'll be back in ten, fifteen minutes.
Well, Kurt, I think there's, Scott has to sign some of that in that folder, I believe, that resolutions.
Mr. Scott.
It came with a matching, like, tie clip, and the tie clip's like this long, I'm like, what kind of guy has a tie this long?
Very big guy.
Tony Pace.
Good?
Yeah.
I can't wear heels, I know.
Director Miller? Director Miller? Director Wenska?
a desire to relook at some of the elements of our board policies, we asked the board members to provide feedback to President Hines on which policies explicitly they want to connect with, the innovation design adoption, one is one that was presented to you, and we wanted to give you an opportunity to discuss that. In essence, the, the essence of the need for change, it was recommended that we move our, bless you, our RFP process to align more alignment with the biennial budget cycle, so that we could do a better job of forecasting long-range planning as far as what the budget would look like from the state level, and how we weren't getting too many innovative opportunities in front, and not having the sustained funding support behind that. And so, the proposed recommendations are to adjust from moving in January of every year to in January of the second year of the Washington State biennial cycle, and then matching the board process that was previously identified just in that second year, and so we'd have an innovation RFP process every two years versus one year, and those would be the recommended changes.
Any questions or comments? Director Oshka.
Hadn't even said it yet, there you go.
You had that look in your eyes.
I did, all right, so, the great thing about our innovative policy is that we're making sure that our community knows that we are listening for ideas and that we believe that they're there. My, I understand the logic of this proposal, my concern is it sends a message, it could send a message that says, we actually only care about your ideas once every two years. So, I'm looking for something in between this, and I haven't been able to articulate the solution, I wanted to bring it up at study session, because I think there's something in between there where we can say, we want to get them all the time, but we're not probably gonna take action until there's a budget year, or something like that, so they know it's not only for school insiders, it's not only if you happen to be at the right meeting on every second year, does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I hear your concerns, I think the idea is for us to get into a predictable rhythm, and so there's gonna have to be an education component to that, to help people understand, so certainly, folks are always welcome to share their ideas with us, we have to put some sort of parameters around it, so that as a large urban school district, we're not constantly trying to react to ideas. I, I think that there's an opportunity to solicit input, people can come, you know, on a weekly basis, they can send us emails, there is multiple ways that they can communicate with us, I would strongly urge us to put in a formal process by which we make determinations, by which we consider options and align it with funding, so that, so that it's predictable and regimented, and I think that the public education piece will help people understand what that rhythm is, so it's not gonna be, we're gonna tell you once, and we're gonna say it tonight, and then those people that are tuned in tonight know that it's every other year, and those that aren't miss out, there'll be regular communication with people, and part of that communication will be the predictability of the process. I'll go to Director Miller and then Vice President Viall.
So, for instance, say these innovative schools takes two or three years to understand the financial cost, and so, that would mean that they won't be taking RFQs or RFPs next year, but will we be able to afford in two years to do that, and it says here, yeah, we're gonna accept them. I think this should be based on more of a fiscal need or fiscal capacity of the district, and saying every two years, second, you know, biennial budget cycle of the legislature, I really don't think that gives enough flexibility for programs, so if we have one year where there's, we're supposed, uh, supposed to accept RFPs, and financially, it's not a good time to take it, well then there's two more years that they have to wait in order to submit, so, I, I, I just have troubles accepting that particular timeline, when we're looking at flexibility and financial responsibility for this, too.
Vice President Viall?
Director Hines, thank you, President Hines, for your, your comments, or same, on the same thing I've been thinking, is getting to a predictability schedule, so that the people that want to submit RFPs will know that the RFP process is aligned with the budget cycle, and in respect to what you requested, President Hines, it said, in February of the respective biennial cycle, if needed, the board will adopt an RFP, so that means that, in response to what you're, the question that you're raising, I think, Director Miller, is that we're not gonna go out and issue one if we don't think the finances are there to do it, so we don't have to, and that's under number two of the proposed alignment changes, because it, obviously, there's a, a point of diminishing returns on where we will reach if we continue to go forward with the, with these, and I think if we do these in a thoughtful manner, as we started out the first time, see where we are, but to say that for purposes now of our process, we will be aligned with the state biennial budget, it may be another year, we're gonna say, no, we did not get money from the state, therefore, we won't entertain an RFP, and that gives us the flexibility to do that. In this, as I read it, and President Hines, this is your amendment, I read that, that this does not say we have to, it says that we, we may, if it coincides with what we feel we can afford.
So, if I may respond?
Sure.
So, then you're saying we will accept RFPs in two more years?
That could be.
Rather than the next year, so this puts us in a case to where there may be a financially stable plan that comes forward, well, we have to wait a year, because we have to wait for the second year of the biennial budget, that's where I'm saying is, let's have a little more flexibility, that's a nice idea, but how do we make it so if somebody comes forward with an idea, we do have the financial capacity to do it? How can we do that? That would be my question.
And the idea is, and I completely understand from where you're coming, and so this, the comparison to the state legislative budget cycle is that they have a budget year, and then they have a supplemental year, and it's generally assumed that there's not going to be any large new items that come during that supplemental year, and you get into a rhythm, so that folks understand during that budget year is the big push, and then in that supplemental year, now there's some flexibility, but they generally don't fund large items in the supplemental year, so we would be setting that same expectation for us as a district as it pertains to these sorts of projects, because otherwise, we have the potential to be faced on an annual basis with consideration of RFPs and budget, and what we've talked about as a board is trying to get into a more predictable multi-year budget cycle. So, I'm, this is by no means the only way we can do this, but it was meant as framework for us to have the conversation, to make that determination, how does it become more predictable? So, how do you get predictability and flexibility at the same time? Director Oshka.
So, if we're looking at the biennial budget of the state, and we're sending out RFPs in January of a budget year, it's too late, I mean, we're not gonna go, we're typically not gonna go ask the state for more money for a new school in the first place, but even if we were, it seems like
Let me clarify, I'm sorry to interrupt, just to clarify, so the, so this does not pertain to money coming from the state?
It's just to have something to align it to?
It's, it's for comparison, so that you
So, you could have aligned it to any other cycle, you just chose that one?
Yes, so, so the example is that you would have a budget year, and you would have a supplemental year, and you would be in this biennial rhythm, where one year you would have a budget, and the next year you'd have supplemental, and then we would have to, because we're still learning how to implement this policy, so just as we've gone now through the go-out-to-RFP process, and we learned, and then we went through the evaluate-RFP process, and we learned, and we're now in the implement-and-RFP process, and we're learning, we would have to continue that learning process around the timeline, so at what point, if we were going to move into this more predictable two-year rhythm, would we need to advertise for RFPs to come in? So, we'd get on, so that we wouldn't, I think there's some flexibility, as we've talked through this conceptually, in what those milestones are, the ultimate outcome is, we want to get on a two-year predictable cycle of solicit RFPs, consider RFPs, fund RFPs.
So, if I may?
Sure.
I, I would recommend that if it's not about the state budget cycle, that we change the language to every two years, but I would also still stick with the concept that I mentioned before, of making sure that people know that they can bring their ideas forward at any time, I mean, ultimately, in our non-RFP years, we should be doing outreach and workshops with organizations, so that there's, so that people know how to do it in the first place, because it shouldn't just be insider politics, that's not the intent or the spirit behind this policy.
I agree, don't, are you?
Yeah.
I agree with that, I think that gives more flexibility, keeps the Washington State thing out of the equation.
Well, the only reason I
I'm just, I'm not done yet.
Okay.
So, and also, what was that comment I was gonna make? Gosh darn, just, it'll come back, go ahead, Karen.
Well, I think the reason for align- Well, I think the reason for aligning it with the budget cycle is that we're going to, as a district, the two-year budget that will also be aligned with the state budget cycle.
And let's say that.
Well, then, we can say that, but we'll finish because that does put us in the position of, if we're doing the RFPs, we'll know what the money is at the end, and if it isn't, as Scott said, we get in, we won't do it. And it does give us predictability, and I don't think that precludes people from, this is specific to the innovation policies to the RFP cycle. That doesn't preclude someone from coming forward with an idea for doing something within a school, that it does not require an RFP. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, I think that flexibility is still there. This pertains to where we actually go out for an RFP process, which to me is a much bigger process, starting a new school, doing a pilot project than it is by saying, "Let's put a new, you know, a math program here or something there," that we still have that flexibility to do that. This just simply sets the rules for when the district decides it's going to go out for a large-scale innovative school or school program, this is the rules, and this is when we will do it. Something that is going to go outside the parameters of our existing programs and budgets. At least, that's how I read when we started the RFP process. But that doesn't preclude tweaking and doing things like arts programs within existing schools and that were already there, and, you know, coming up with new ideas for preschool and so on like that because we certainly did not do RFPs for those. This, to me, is a specific process for someone, if I want to come in and say, "I want a, you know, a school, you know, to train future leaders, a leadership academy," that would be a whole different issue than saying, "We're going to beef up our civics programs throughout the district." So, I see them as two, two different issues, this being one specifically relating to aligning the RFP process to our budget cycle. The other one would be the simple improvement for ideas and things that we receive from our schools and from outside the school district. So, that's how I see it.
Director Ushka, thank you.
I appreciate that, and I'm wondering, if I have an idea, and I keep feeling that since we're talking about an innovative school called idea, that I'm being ironic every time I say that.
Yes.
But if I have a concept of a school, wouldn't it, and I feel like our process was very quick, and sometimes I would have, it might have been nice to dig deeper, would if we actually did the RFP the year before the budget year so that we had an idea of, to study how much it was going to cost, so that we could plant it into the budget in the budget year? My other thought is that what I'm hearing Director Viall say in terms of the RFP really being intended for larger structures, that was not the inference that I got. I don't feel like this says that.
Agreed.
And if that's what we want to say, I actually would support that because then, at the same time, we have a other language that says, "We're taking our, we're always interested in ideas for programs that can leverage the dollars that we have in the schools we have." Because, for instance, I want to recognize and support ideas like Lincoln Center that later became Lincoln High School, and if we don't recognize that outside of an RFP process, we're going to fail to catch those good seeds that grow into wonderful programs.
So, I like to, I agree. If you read this policy, it says innovation, it doesn't say the size of the innovation. So, Karen, I could really, I understand what you're saying, but I can read that by saying also, wow, what does that mean? Does that mean a small program in a school, or is that a school? And so, I think we need to really describe what size of project this is. You know, he's always says, say, is an RFP, but not the size of a program.
And I think what we just went through tells us we need to define that.
Yes.
And I think, and I think we're talking small program, big program, and small program will still be there, but when we're talking, like you said, about starting new schools, to me, that's the RFP process.
We need to spell it out.
Well, I'm agreeing.
Yeah, you're agreeing.
And I think, and then, I think we align that on a two-year, don't do it every year.
They can't afford to.
And people will know that, okay, if I want to start this, and the board has the discretion of saying, "No, we don't have enough dollars. We know we can't entertain an RFP this year for a bigger school," and we will know that. You know, if, on terms of our, looking at, how, I guess what I'm thinking is, how many new schools are we going to start?
Right.
And how many can we sustain?
Yeah.
And I think that's different to me than program improvement within a school, which is a smaller, so I think what maybe, Dr. Garcia, we should do is to spend a little more time defining what we will do RFPs for and what we won't. Does that make sense? I mean, to you from, I'm asking you from the staff person, you're the one that has to go do the stuff that we asked you to do.
Answer it, Josh. I believe I hear the board's intent, right or wrong, the staff has used this policy when referring to new, with, when there's a school code that is in play. And so, if the staff, if the school wants to change its program, its theme, its innovative to be a certain designation, school-wide, then they would follow these guidelines. And so, if that's a helpful context to spell that out, and the flip side of that, if you will, is when the staff says, "Well, we want to start an element within our school that is a thread, something that's innovative, or we want a waiver for a specific element of the school," then they go through what we call the program placement process, which is a fluid process that anybody at any time could do that.
Is that in policy? Is that spelled out in policy?
Program placement is, but program placement is not open to the public. And that's a big difference here. And so, I think that that would be, so far, the public has not said, "Hey, we're going to come to the school district and propose whatever." But you certainly hear about people with ideas when you're going to community meetings around the city and say, "Well, go to the innovative process." And ask them because if you have an idea and you have a not-for-profit, it might be a perfect thing to support those students at that school.
Right. And I would argue that we have a system, I guess not argue.
Suggest.
Amen. Suggest.
I would suggest.
That through our school center decision-making and PTA, that there are vehicles for community members to take those ideas and have them kind of organically move up through the schools.
And you know that because we're inside baseball, right? Because by virtue of being on the board, we're inside baseball. We know a lot of that stuff.
I have a kid, multiple kids in school, so I'm engaged at that level with...
Right, right, but not everybody is. And so, I guess, I don't disagree with you, but would it hurt to specify it here also? Because people look at it and they think, "I can only do it in this way."
Yeah.
And I think that our spirit behind this policy is to make sure that everybody can play. The other thing that I wanted to hop back on is...
I think the important differentiation on that, though, is if we have a, is a clarification of how you participate through school center decision-making and PTA versus through RFP. So, to help people, and I think we can get through the website and other means, that sort of information more widely available for members of the public so that they understand what does it mean to participate. So, an FAQ or some sort of a resource, I guess...
Things like, can any school get a waiver for ours if they want to do a program that says blah, blah, blah?
Sure.
Yes, use the innovative policy.
So, you've got an FAQ that people can walk through, and that helps them.
And that might have been a bad example because Josh is reaching for it.
I do not think that that is a bad example.
However.
Therefore.
I will remind the board that there is a negotiated CBA that outlines some conditions about programs inside the school that the staff has addressed. What I am hearing from the board is that if, we need to, let me see if I can capture the general intent of the conversation. We need to more explicitly find ways inside the policy to communicate what are the vehicles for program placement opportunities in addition to new school or whole school opportunities, and that you collectively would welcome some verbiage in that direction to review, to think about, rather than the current language. And in addition to that, to remove the language around the Washington State biennium and more align it to your Tacoma Public Schools budget cycle, which is a two-year cycle.
On that budget, if I may, I apologize. I had suggested before that perhaps the year prior to the budget cycle would be a good time to introduce that RFP so that you could know what you were looking at before you got there.
Into the two-year cycle, what you're saying.
So, if your budget starts on this year, and then it's a two-year cycle, I mean, it's the middle of the year where you should really be getting the RFP because then you can look at it, plan it, figure out what the money is so that you know if you can do it in the next year's budget. Because if we start the budget in the same year that we get the idea, the budget's already built. I don't know if I'm making sense, so feel free to jump in.
I'm 100% tracking.
I'm not tracking that either.
I got a little bit.
I'm just thinking that...
The middle year of a two-year...
Debbie understands.
It doesn't matter anymore.
Debbie, whatever Debbie wants.
Well, but maybe Debbie can help clarify my point because I'm...
The middle year of a two-year...
There is no end.
So...
Not the first year, but the second year. So, basically, you're going to do the RFP process.
I think that's what we're saying.
That's what we're saying.
I thought you were doing it on the first year of the budget cycle.
The second year of the budget cycle, the board will conduct to review portfolio, and that's what it says. That's what we're trying to align to the second year.
Then you'd fund it in the budget year.
In the third year.
And we will fund it in the budget year.
Then we all agree, and that's absolutely fantastic. Thank you.
That's what this says.
I think we all agree.
I mean, that's what that says, the second year of the budget cycle.
I just had it independently. We'll see what Josh comes up with, see if we agree with it or not.
So, I have one more comment on this, if I may.
Sure.
The other thing that I, this is a new policy. We are walking into uncharted land, so to speak, and we don't have anything, in case I've missed it because I missed some red lines there already, on memorializing when the board will review this policy. I think that we are all very engaged and will keep our close eyes on this, but we are not going to be here forever.
What?
Point in case, Kurt won't be here for more than the next 30 days. So, a case in point.
You've coined a new term.
Yeah. Yeah. See? Innovative. So, how do we, so I don't know if we want to look at putting some kind of a, we're going to review our policy for whether or not it's still effective into our policy for the first five years or something.
Director Ushka, I remember specifically the board work study up in the superintendent Santoro's office where you brought this up before, and you were spot on. And as a result of that, in policy...
It's in the other policy?
Yeah.
Correct. It says in policy 0105, in the very last sentence, you asked for that same piece to be in that says, "Policy review, the school board will review this policy at least annually for five years after enactment."
And does that statement then cover all the innovation policies or just 0105?
I think it can be interpreted in multiple ways.
So, good policy is left to interpretation on that.
And I think that as you, as boards always have the flexibility to review board policy anytime they choose to, and sometimes they operate in a specific cycle based on that board. But it would be one of those things that you'd want to consider, how often board policy should be updated. There may be situations...
Yeah, I mean, a good policy shouldn't have to change a lot. Sorry to interrupt, Josh, but just because it's, this is new.
And so, you have it reviewed annually, so in essence, you're reviewing this policy right now as an annual way to do this. The question would become is, is do you want to solidify how often you review board policy? And for just this one policy or all of your policies, what I was trying to say, not very articulated, is sometimes there's laws that change which then drive you to review policy more often. So, there may be potential laws in this next, cause you to consider reviewing that policy even more than annually.
Can I go back a little bit on the program placement issue? I would, if we're going to get into having program placement be open, more open, I would like to make sure that people know that whatever they submit or ask needs to be aligned with district goals and needs to be measurable and so on because that's why we established program placement, because we were getting stuff all over the place that was a boutique here thing here, there, was not aligned to, and our whole process of innovation is to raise academic achievement. So, if we are accepting from outside, I would like to make it very clear that these need to be aligned with district strategic plan goals, need to be measurable, and need to indicate how they will improve, just as the RFP process, how they will improve academic achievement within the existing school, which we do ask the program placement people to do now. So, I think if we're talking about making this more accessible, which is fine, I agree with Scott, I think it, probably if they are going, people have specific ideas for the schools, they should go through the school SCDM and PTA, but they need to know that there are very specific requirements before that these will be considered in program placement, that we're not just going to go out and start kite-flying school or something like that without indicating why that is necessary for this improvement. I mean, it might be a part of a physics program, I'm just kidding, but that needs to be tied and to be shown in how that will improve the school and will improve the academics and serve all the kids within that school. So, that's what I would suggest we do, so that we make sure that it is structured so that we don't wind up with people not saying, "I didn't understand that this had to be tied to an academic achievement goal or to a partnership goal or to whatever." So, I'm going to ask that we do that.
If I may?
So, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I actually read through all these, I actually read through all these policies today, and I think that I read that part, but the language needs to be strengthened, and it does. I think the challenge is that we have more than one innovative policy and the way that they work together and other policies that work with it, and making sure that, what happens to people that don't do what we do is they read one policy and they expect to find all the answers.
Yeah.
So, and then, so there's a, there's both the policy end, and then there's the, make sure people understand what we're saying end.
And I think there's a real opportunity with an FAQ-type document where then you could link to, here's a policy, here's school center decision-making. I have a lot of confidence in our...
Strategic plan alignment.
Yes, and you just, and you just walk through, and it's all very logical. I think Dan and his team could build something very easily that would, that would help meet all of those needs. And it consolidates the resources for people by virtue of the FAQ and the hyperlink, so they don't have to go out and randomly find them. We anticipate what it's, what they're going to ask and what we want them to know, and we make it very user-friendly, very intuitive for them to navigate through it.
That's a good idea.
So, I like the idea of people having simple ideas that don't cause, cost a lot of money to be able to just institute those in the, in the schools. Like, I'm waiting for my history school, they could do that grade by grade, and it'd be great. And I think what we, and I like the two-year cycle, and I think we really need to take into consideration, I mean, Tony Pace is spending a lot of time on this, you know, when you talk about bi-weekly meetings, and so, I do think we have to really talk to the staff, what is reasonable and, you know, how to, because once we institute it, it goes into effect, then how much work is it the next year to make sure that everything is working properly, they have the supplies they need and all that? So, feedback from the staff would be good, too.
So, we are at our 30-minute mark. I appreciate the good conversation. I don't want to stifle the conversation. I just want to note that we're at the 30-minute mark.
So, I don't know, we had to actually have a time limit for, on a study session?
Well, we had promised you 30 minutes. So, I'm just, I'm doing a time check.
I've got one more comment.
I'm happy to continue the conversation. I just, if we had, if you had budgeted 30 minutes, I'm reminding you that we're at, we're near 30 minutes.
So, two more comments is, I agree with the workload of Tony and her team. I would hope that in the future, the board only approves one per year. I think two is way too much. She has a lot of work to do, believe it or not. So, I would hope, you know, you can't put that on policy, but my hope for, you know, years down the road, plus I don't know how many more schools will be.
You may not be...
Yeah, exactly, may not be anymore. On cross-references, and I'm asking if this can be done because we're, one of the reasons we're doing innovative schools is for diversity within our community, city, and district. Can we do a cross-reference to our diversity policy within here, too? So, people understand, this is one of the reasons. We want, you know, diverse group of students be able to access any program we have within the district. So, I would ask the deputy superintendent or even Shannon, I guess, if that's possible.
And I'm assuming you're referencing equity?
Equity.
Equity, yes.
Equity and non-discrimination policy.
Yes. I think that really does give a push to why we're doing this also.
Yeah, good comment. Director Ushka.
Thank you. You know, last, sometime not too distant past, we sat down and, at a study session, and looked at our whole innovative program on a map across the district and talked about geographical equity and where to go from that. I think that's something very good about what we're doing. And I don't know that in that review comment that's there, that there's anything that's... And I don't know that in that review comment that's there, that there's anything that says that we need to do that. And I think the thing that's particularly important, that this is an innovative school in terms of a public system, is our commitment to do that.
So the placement or citing of the programs, not just...
So a review of...
The merit of the program, but where are we going to place the program geographically?
Yeah, just a geographic, a geographic equity review. And I don't know that that's any place in the policy. I, again, have faith that we'll continue to do that because of our, it's our baby. But we want to make sure that future boards do, too, because this should not be a short-lived process, in my opinion.
So, Dr. Garcia, what do you need from us in terms of next steps and milestone timeline?
I just want to re-clarify some of the highlights, and I think flexibility in the sense of allowing us to bring you back some further language. And so here's some of the highlights. Two-year budget cycle linked to our budget cycle. I want to make sure that I capture the general intent. Communicate program placement versus school-wide change or new school codes, and those that are aligned to the strategic plan, contract, SCDM, and that process, so more articulation around that. A communication plan for all the innovation policies, so that it's connected, including cross-referencing, and also the issue of equity, and then re-verifying geographic diversity in the policy.
A review, some sort of a moral miles review of it, yeah.
And I'll start with reviewing to see if it's there somewhere, and if it is, we'll be able to bring that back to or not. I appreciate Director Winskill and Director Miller's comments. I could feel my hair on the back of my neck rise, as my colleagues may try to beat me up out in the parking lot, if I was remiss not to say, this is a lot of work. And even what we're finding is, it's one thing to, to just say, well, we're going to do it at all costs. It's another thing, and not know those costs. It's another thing to thoughtfully go through step by step to say, so where do we agree and where do we not agree? And I just, we're committed to doing that as a staff. A lot of times, people think they have a great idea, until you start to go through, what are the steps? And so this is, this is about building infrastructure to handle these conversations, which means that there are dollars associated with that infrastructure, in order to do it in a meaningful and respectful manner. And we may bring back to you some, even some frameworks about how often we can review program placement. Because what, in the conversations that we've had in the past, is we want to be respectful to community members, and what we weren't comfortable with is saying we had this open door and not being able to get back to them...
Yep.
Without understanding that, you know, we'll review these at certain times of the year. So we may go back to some of those old protocols and bring that back, but just, I'm adding that for context, so you can do some pre-thinking about that when we bring your language back, and then you can decide if that's appropriate or not.
Okay.
So part of, if I may?
You may.
Part of what I would want to hear, I don't want to see anybody burned out. We've got great staff doing fantastic things, and I want that to be long-lasting. I appreciate all the effort. But if we're looking at it and we're saying, okay, well, I mean, I guess what I would want to hear is, is, you know, board of directors, if you want this, we would recommend appoint a physician that does this, so that if there's a budget associated with it, to support it, because we don't, I'm not, I don't want to ask for work that, that takes blood from oranges or life from teachers and staff. We want it to be sustainable from a human's perspective as well as a fiscal one.
And we appreciate that, and we're just, it's new for all of us, so working through that is, is, and not being able to necessarily plan. We're finding even sometimes folks don't need any waivers, folks don't need anything, and it's just, it's just recommitting and getting clear about, so what is it that you really want? And, you know, the process that you've even set up has been very helpful to say, you're looking to be innovative, but what is it that you're trying to do differently that you can't currently do? And we're finding some folks saying, I just didn't know I could do that.
Exactly.
Great. Move forward. There's no ball or policy that requires you to do that. So we'll work through those, and we appreciate your flexibility and your consideration of that we may need to build infrastructure. We're not saying that we do, that we just, we'll, we'll work on how to process that, that intent. And so our next steps will, will bring you back some sample language for you to consider, if there is board policy changes. If there are no board policy changes necessary, we anticipate, based on some of your feedback, that there will be. But if there isn't, we'll communicate where we think that it addresses your original intent, and if you agree, then we can move forward, and if you don't agree, then we can spend more time discussing that.
Okay. Last comment to Vice President Vial.
I guess, you know, the thing that I, I am most concerned about is capacity, our ability to do what we're doing and to continue to do it well. And I think this, looking at this policy again, and making sure that it's aligned and that we're not doing this every year, and that we're not just trying to do stuff that we think is innovative, that may not be what you're saying, Dr. Garcia, is for us to have a very specific language as to when we're going to do this, and into the program placement language, so that we make sure that we are very cognizant of the capacity of this school district, both from a staffing and from a financial point. Because we've seen programs get started that cannot be sustained, and that is the last absolute thing we do not want to do. And so I think we are new at this, so we're better to go slow rather than fast, and we are better to receive. And I, I would want to hear from the staff when they feel they are being overburdened. I've been in that position. I worked for a governor who wanted something done the day before yesterday.
But you did it.
But we did it, but he also recognized when we said, Governor, we can't do that. And that's what I want to hear from the staff about, we just can't do that. We don't have the staff or the resources at this point. We can do this piece of it, but we can't do the whole thing. And I want the staff to feel comfortable telling us, at least I personally do, as a board, whether or not, you know, we can do this and do it with the high quality that we expect of ourselves in this school district. And we know how to sort out the wheat from the chaff, but what's, what I used to call, you know, just plain whining from what's realistic, and we know we have staff that we can trust to tell us that, because the last thing we want is for something to fail. So that's my final opinions and comments.
And Dr. Garcia, do you have...
One last comment to, for you, we'd welcome your thinking of, it's sometimes easy to add, it's very difficult to stop doing. And so as we get clear with our benchmarks and our school profiles, there may be opportunities to do things differently when we have identified very specifically when it's not working. And so sometimes innovation is not just new and more of something, but stopping doing